It is six o'clock. We have a formal call City Council meeting in order. First item on the agenda tonight is the invocation given by myself and then both the pledge, both the American and Texas flags given by Councilman Guerina.
Would please join me? Most gracious Almighty God, we pause to give you praise, honor, and glory. We thank you for all the wonderful blessings you give us each and every day of our lives. And we know that you love us, and we hope that you know we love you. We ask for your forgiveness of our sins and of our shortcomings. We thank you for your mercy and grace in forgiving us and continuing to love us. We ask your special blessing on those who are sick, who are suffering, and those who have lost loved ones, and those who feel alone, suppressed, and/or are depressed. We ask your special blessing on those here at home and abroad who spend most of their lives in fighting for freedom and justice and protecting others that we might have the right of freedom, truth, and justice. We ask all this in your son's most precious name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Next item on the agenda is a public hearing consideration of the proposed fiscal year 2012-2013 budget property tax revenue increase and proposed property tax rate. In accordance with the city charter and state law, a public hearing is being held on the proposed fiscal year 2012-2013 budget property tax revenue increase and proposed property tax rate to provide an opportunity for citizen comment. The proposed fiscal year 2012-2013 property tax rate is the same rate as the current tax rate. The proposed budget includes changes made by council at the budget workshop held on August 11, 2012. An agenda item will be on the September 10, 2012, City Council meeting to hold a second public hearing. Then an agenda item to adopt the budget property tax revenue increase and property tax rate will be on the September 17, 2012, City Council meeting at 7:00 PM in the council chambers. Recommendation is that City Council conduct the public hearing. Just want to let people, remind people what we say here is that the tax rate is remaining exactly the same as it is currently, so there is no tax rate increase. And when it says a revenue increase, it means we actually had new property and new taxes come in that are paying additional taxes what we had in the past. So nobody's getting actually new taxes. Actually, the average homeowner price, the average homeowner price will actually go down because after your homeowner pricing in the city, the valuation went down just a little bit. With that, I entertain a motion. I don't have any cards to speak on this, so I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move.
Close the public hearing.
Have a motion to close the hearing by Councilman Ferguson, a second.
Second.
By Councilman Durham. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Item D is visitor citizen form. At this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. Do not have any speaker cards filled out on that. Next item is consideration of providing direction to staff regarding aerial spraying for mosquito mitigation. The current outbreak of West Nile virus in North Texas has led to aggressive measures being taken by area cities and counties. Louisville has worked closely with local and state health officials and has used measures including extensive public education, targeted code enforcement efforts, larvicide treatments for standing water on public property, and ground-based spraying of pesticides in selected areas. The county has requested that the city indicates its interest in a possible aerial spraying program coordinated by the county. Recommendation that the City Council provide direction to staff regarding aerial spraying for mosquito mitigation. I do have a few cards here filled out. Have first here Jennifer Whitaker. If you would come forward and give your name and address for the record, please.
May I hand these to you there?
Sure.
Handouts?
Sure. Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Whitaker, and my address is 1608 Cedar Keys Drive, zip code 75067. I'm here today just to voice my own opinion that the application of aerial pesticides is not a solution that we should consider. I've outlined in the slide that you have in front of you that says I actually have a degree from the University of North Texas in chemistry. I have seven years' experience in an aquatic toxicology lab located in Denton, Texas. I also have another additional eight years working for the Trinity River Authority, dealing with the same type of aquatic toxicology issues along with environmental effects based on pollution, pesticide application, and things of that nature. I've also, in the third slide, outlined to you what the root of the West Nile virus. I'm not going to go over that because I have five minutes. I have basically five main reasons that we should consider not spraying pesticide. The first one is that spraying is the least effective measure you can come up with. When you do spray, the pesticide itself must be applied directly to the mosquitoes in order for it to work, so you're only really going to get about 10% of the mosquito population. Also, as per the resource guide provided by DUET, which is the chemical that will be applied, it's most effective when it's applied to the mosquito's wings. So that's even harder to do. We're only working on the adult organisms. The lifespan of an adult mosquito is only two weeks. So you're not looking at one application, you're looking at several over a period of time. So not only are you applying it one time, but now you're going to talk about doing it over an entire summer or a fall. And in Texas, we don't normally get cold, so you may even go into winter or spring the next year. If you look, the next thing I have here for the next point is the toxic to natural, you know, you're also looking at a toxicity to the natural predators of mosquitoes. The chemical that they're looking at using is DUET, as I've said. In your packet, you'll have an actual product label. It's the long sheet, as well as an MSDS from that actual chemical itself. Basically, on these, you have, you're instructed not to apply to bodies of water. If you look, I've included a map of Louisville. You can see all the little blue dots where you've got water applied, or water in the city, as well as you have various ponds and lakes that probably aren't showing up on here. So that's an awful lot of water for the pesticide company that's applying this to miss. If you specifically look at the information on the product label under environmental hazards, it specifically says, "This pesticide is highly toxic to aquatic organisms, including fish and aquatic invertebrates. Runoff from treated areas or deposition of spray droplets into a body of water may be hazardous to fish and aquatic invertebrates." Before making, and it goes on to talk about how to apply the pesticide. And you're instructed to not apply over bodies of waters, bodies of water, lake, rivers, permanent streams, natural ponds, commercial fish ponds, swamp, marshes, and estuaries, except when necessary to target areas where adult mosquitoes are present, and weather conditions will facilitate movement of applied material beyond the body of water in order to minimize incidental deposition into the water body. So basically, you want to apply it, but you want to hope that the wind blows it away from the water. We're also highly toxic to bees. The other issue here, directions for use, if you look on that towards the bottom of the page, your directions say, "Do not contaminate food, feed, or drinking water. Do not contaminate pasture land, range land, crop land, poultry ranges, or potable water supplies with spray drift. And treatment of corrals, feedlots, swine lots, and zoos. Cover any exposed drinking water, drinking water fountains, and animal feed before application." The product label itself pretty much is a little scary. So definitely, there are a lot of things to consider if you are going to apply this to Louisville that need to be taken into account as far as how we're going to not apply this to the bodies of water that we have existing here. Moving on, you also have the problem of natural selection. We're going to spray pesticides on mosquitoes. You're going to hope that some of them die. You're going to have some that aren't even exposed, so they're not going to die. You're also going to have some that are genetically predispositioned to not be killed off by the pesticide. In that case, you're allowing that genetic makeup to continue on. So now, not only are we not killing mosquitoes, but we're allowing the super mosquitoes to breed and not be killed off by this specific pesticide. So now, we have to choose another pesticide next time around. So at some point, you're going to have to go and add more pesticide along with a more toxic pesticide. So, and that's, you know, that won't happen today or tomorrow, but the lifespan of these mosquitoes, like I said, are only two weeks. So adaptation doesn't take very long for these guys. They actually, they can, you know, multiply in a couple of months. So we're not talking a long time for the genetic makeup to change. Moving on, you've also got some short-
Ma'am, if you could wrap it up.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
So basically, if you'll just, it's an entire long process here, so if you'll look, also just maybe keep this in, just kind of keep this in mind, that there's only less than .2%, or .02% of people in Denton County that have even been affected.
Okay.
So, not a lot.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Next speaker is Sherri Prince. If you would come forward and give your name and address for the record, please.
I have my handout.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Sherri Prince. I live at 1703 Creekway Drive, Louisville, Texas. I am an organic master gardener and a master composter and a solutions provider. I am requesting that the city of Louisville vote against taking part in the Denton County aerial spraying for West Nile mosquito. We are the stewards of this planet. If we choose to use toxic chemicals to destroy the ecosystem instead of working with nature to nurture it, then there won't be any planet or mankind left. There are alternative ways to doing what you are doing with these neurotoxins that will work as well as the choices you have been made for ground and aerial spraying. In the August 22, 2012 memorandum from Claude King, city manager to the council, he states, "Staff continues to harbor some skepticism about the effectiveness of pesticide spraying. However, most sources estimate the spraying will only kill about 30 to 40% of adult mosquitoes and provide only a short window of relief before the next generation hatches. Spraying can be a useful part of the larger toolbox that includes several other measures already being used in Louisville, those being public education, code enforcement, larvicide treatments. From this memo, you are finding that there is no magic bullet to this situation. In this or anything you do in life, you find that it usually takes a combination of solutions to bring things under control." That is the word, "control." You want control over this situation. It is obvious that the toxic method is not giving you the control you need. Since you are finding that you have to reapply and reapply to get some kind of control, then why not work with the planet by controlling it using organic methods? I have a list that you have there of organic alternatives that the city can buy on a large scale and the homeowners can purchase for their own properties. This is not a situation that is just the responsibility of the city to handle. The homeowners and apartment residents also have to be responsible for their lives. The city can use earth harvest and dunks and bits for their responsible areas. Residents can use Avenger and dunks and bits to kill mosquito larvae on their own property. Residents would take responsibility to remove all the standing water and be responsible for wearing DEET-free, non-toxic repellent because DEET is far too toxic. DEET has been found by a Duke University medical pharmacologist that prolonged exposure to DEET can impair functioning in parts of the brain. Applying DEET to the largest organ of our body is a main line to our brain. It makes me and my husband physically ill, so we use alternatives like Bug Band's homemade vanilla water orange spray. There are also other alternative repellents on the market that are DEET-free, and you can buy at Sprouts, Bass Pro, and other places and online. This situation has caused people to make decisions based on fear. We are bombarded all day and night on the news with how many instances of West Nile-infected mosquitoes have been found in each county, as well as how many human reports and then human deaths because of this situation. People are panicking and fearful because they don't know what to do and expect the city to fix the problem because that is the easy way instead of taking responsibility. What would we do if we constantly heard reports of how many people were going to the hospital daily for heart disease? Then how many people that died each day in each county and each city from heart disease? Would we expect the city or county or federal government to come to the residents' rescue to stop heart disease? No. Why should this situation be any different? We have the alternative organic tools that would help control the situation, that would nurture our nature and mankind so we all can flourish. Nature and humans are one ecosystem. Nature needs humans to survive, and humans need nature to survive. I can supply you with the list of products the city and homeowners and residents can use so we can start educating everyone on what we need to do to work together to fight this situation. Then you will have the control you need. There will be deaths, but they will be less. We can't protect everyone, especially if they refuse to wear repellent and don't respect the fact that mosquitoes are in our lives and not wear long sleeves and long pants. You can bring a horse to water, but you can't make it drink. Please vote against taking part in the Denton County aerial spraying for the West Nile mosquitoes and find an organic solution to the ground spraying and implement the non-toxic method for city and residents to work together to accomplish this control. Thank you for your time and listening to my request.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Helen Byron. Would come forward and give your name and address for record, please.
Good evening. My name is Helen Byron. I live at 2210 North Mill in Louisville, and I'm for the aerial spraying. I think that there comes a time when you need to take stronger actions. There are people's lives at stake. I understand about the environment. I understand about wildlife. I understand about the fish. But people are more important. I don't care how low the percentage of people that are getting sick and even remaining with residual effects from this illness and the low amount of deaths, it's still too many. And I'm all for the spraying, whatever we can do and however we can do it. And I'm also more encouraged by the fact that there has started to be some ground spraying, and I would like to see more of the ground spraying. If you can't see your way to the aerial spraying, at least expand the ground spraying. The virus is spreading, and I would like to see more of that being done to combat it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Shellek Philkins. Could you just give your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Shellel Philkins, and I am a Louisville resident. I live at 2211 Campbell Croft Drive. Thank you for your time, Honorable Mayor and council members. I have perhaps a different perspective to this whole matter, and recently, not expecting to be by any measure, I was told that I was carrying the antibodies of the West Nile virus, meaning, of course, that I had become infected recently. And, you know, you do your own web research, you get some knowledge by reading about it, but it was actually confirmed as they took a blood sample and said, "Yep, you got it." And as a result of that, I've learned that, you know, you carry these antibodies, and they actually will give you immunity, is what they're saying. They don't know how long or what that looks like, but I would also tell you that my symptoms were, you know, they were noticeable. I wouldn't say that I did not, that I had a few days where I was obviously not well. But like any virus, if you've had one, it passes, and you go on, and, you know, you get through it. So, you know, again, I spend a lot of time outside. We're very outdoorsy. We enjoy our garden. We enjoy our lake here. So my concerns are that, I mean, I realize there are some people out there who have become ill. I realize there are some people who may have long-term effects from this. But at the end of the day, my position would be that we not move forward with the aerial spraying. And I just, I thought it might be interesting for you to hear the perspective of someone who's actually had it and is coming out of it. I personally believe that the accountability of each of ourselves is the way to win on this. I like what I'm hearing on the organic measures. As with all things, you know, there is a cost there. I realize there are some people who got a lot sicker than I did, and I'm sorry for that. But I don't think, at the end of the day, the ends justify the means. So I would respectfully request that you not move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have Bing Burton. Bing, if you'd come forward and give your name and address for record, please.
I'm Bing Burton. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm not a Louisville resident. I am Director of Public Health-
If you wouldn't mind moving that mic up just a, there you go. Thank you, sir.
I'm a little bit of a redwood, too.
I have to.
I am Director of Denton County Health Department. I know that you're aware we're in the midst of a West Nile virus epidemic. We have the highest attack rate in the state. We consider it a very serious disease. There are a number of cases, many cases, most cases, in fact, much like the person before me, that didn't have severe illness. We've had 86 cases that are West Nile fever. We've had 36 that are West Nile neuroinvasive disease, and neuroinvasive disease would suggest either encephalitis or meningitis. Many of those individuals will fully recover. For some of them, it will be a life-changing event. Public health, we're in the business of prevention, and so any recommendation that I would make would be based on prevention. Aerial spraying is a little different approach for us in North Texas. It's not something that we do routinely. Other areas of the country do, but it's not something that we do routinely. My strong preference would be more traditional strategies. Love to see us have been effective with education, larvicide, and ground spraying. The reality is, every day, I see four or five new cases of West Nile virus. We haven't been effective. We have two deaths in the county. I just became aware of another death today. There was actually a visitor from Nebraska that came to Denton County, went back to Nebraska, became seriously ill, and did expire. The best information we have from the best minds in public health in the nation, the CDC tells us this strategy is safe. What we would utilize is called ultra-low volume pesticide application. So a plane is flying at 300 feet. They apply eight tenths of an ounce per acre. So that is the ultra-low volume. It's targeted for just mosquitoes. It's, because it is so diluted, doesn't have much effect at all on mammals certainly, or even larger insects. Case rates, I should give you just a little bit of information on that. The Denton County rate is 17.7. I mentioned that's the highest in the state, but some municipalities have higher rates. Flower Mounds rate is 26.8. Louisville rate is 27.3. And you may have noticed in Dallas County, most of the cases were located in the northern part of the county. In Denton County, most of our cases, the higher concentration is in the southern part of the county. That is the reality of the disease. The spraying that was done in Dallas County was not initiated by the Health Department. It wasn't the Health Department's idea. It was based on the recommendation by Dallas County Medical Society. Their infectious disease docs recognized, "We're treating a condition here that we can't seem to get headway on." And so they made the recommendation for the county then to declare an emergency and request state and federal funds. And that is what Judge Horn did last Tuesday when she declared an emergency for Denton County based on now our 122 cases. That makes state and federal assets available to us. I've spoken with the Commissioner of Health, and he acknowledges that we do have a public health emergency and thereby can make this aerial spraying available to us. We believe it is safe. We believe it is effective, and it's available at no cost.
One question I have a quick is, I'd seen, I've been doing a lot of research on it. I'd seen where there's several other states and area across the United States that had done it. And you mentioned that in your presentation a minute ago. But one I looked at in particular was Lee County Mosquito Control District out of Florida, and they've been established since 1958. So other places have been doing this on a regular basis?
Yes, sir. Even in Texas, Harris County deals with a more substantial mosquito problem than we do. The best information on the CDC website comes out of Sacramento County in California. They had an outbreak somewhat similar to ours in 2005. Half the county was sprayed, half the county was not sprayed. After spraying, residents in the area that was not sprayed were six times more likely to be infected.
All right. Thanks, sir.
Last question. Doctor?
Yes, sir.
You mentioned that the, there were now three deaths from Denton County?
Yes, sir.
And just because they visited, they think they got it here?
I don't think Nebraska was dealing with the West Nile virus.
Did they only come to Denton County? I'm not trying to be-
No, sir.
You know what I'm saying?
He came here, visited relatives, stayed here. Like most of the fatalities, this was an elderly gentleman coming to spend time with family members, was here in Denton County, stayed here, went directly back to Nebraska.
And because you're up, I was going to ask three questions at a time, but since you're here, let me ask these questions now. How many deaths were solely contributing to West Nile virus in Texas?
All of the deaths that I am familiar with certainly are complicated by underlying health factors.
Okay. So, I mean, again, not trying to be, just, you know, whatever, just trying to make sure I understand this. They could have died if they got a bad case of the flu, or strep, or someone coughed on them, something.
It is true that the cases of West Nile virus that result in the most serious form of the disease are often among individuals whose health is compromised.
Okay. So taking that into, I understand health is compromised.
Yes, sir.
We don't want them to die from anything, but I understand that. What is that number in Texas that died even with complications and they also had West Nile? Do you know the number? I mean, we've got three in Denton, but what's, do you know the statewide?
The last number I saw was about 25 deaths statewide.
Statewide, 25 deaths?
Yes, sir.
Okay. For now, sir, that is my only question. I just wanted to make sure I had an understanding there.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, that's all the speaker cards I have. I do have some cards here. These following people are in opposition. Scott Feelings of 2211 Campbell Croft Drive, Louisville. Edith and Ray Courtney of 1716 South Edmonds, Number 96, Louisville. Robin Courtney, 1402 North Valley Parkway, Louisville. Lisa McLean, 1137 Pebblebrook Drive, Louisville. And Lauren Swango, 339 Flag Drive, Louisville. Drive, Louisville. The following people are in favor of the spraying. Carolyn B. Willis, four fifty sort, four fifty-six Crockett in Louisville. Michelle Cook, seven oh seven Catherine Drive, Louisville. Gaylor Colson, seven oh five Catherine Drive, Louisville. Trent Myers, seven oh nine Catherine Drive of Louisville. Dale Behringer, fifteen oh one Camillion of Louisville. Sheila Behringer, fifteen oh one Camelia of Louisville. And Leanne and Charmaine Herity of eleven twenty-eight Raleigh Drive. That's all the cards I do have. Okay. Councilor Granna?
You want me to start with comments, sir?
Yes.
Okay. I do have quite a few comments. I wanted to start with the first speaker. I think Ms. Whitaker, I thought she was very logical. My, my education, formal education, tried to be a chemist. Congratulations for passing that. That's my minor. But anyway, in the fire department, I was, you know, trained for hazardous materials and hazmat tech. And I noticed on the NFPA, the National Fire Protection Act Fire Diamond, that the health hazard is one on there. If a gallon of that was spilled on our streets, it would be a full-blown hazmat incident. And we're talking about spraying this all over our state. Diluted, yes, but we know how things are when they're diluted. Oh, one thing I did find a flaw in, that in Alaska, it does get cold, and the mosquitoes over there, you could put saddles on them and ride them. They're pretty big. All jokes aside, West Nile virus is a very, very serious condition to be concerned with. I know someone personally that was in the hospital and, or is in the hospital, and it's very serious. Again, my friend has a lot of serious complications. But I look at this, when I see only twenty-five people died across the state, and you compare that to just anything else, like eighteen-hundred people died across the state so far this year from car accidents, are we gonna jump overboard and take everybody's car keys away? No. It, it's one of those things that it's a sad thing, but we look at the long-term effects, not just the short-term effects. Now, this chemical that we're using, and this combination is duet, I heard the comment of nineteen fifty-eight. Have we been using that chemical since nineteen fifty-eight? Does any, doctor, do you know? Don't, don't know? One of the case studies that we talked about in my hazmat training was the simple things that we didn't think were gonna cause problems, end up causing problems in the long term. Our Vietnam veterans were exposed to Agent Orange. Hey, it only kills plants. Nobody got sick back then. But now we're attributing, we're finding out through statistical data that all those soldiers that were directly exposed to Agent Orange have been dying of prematurely from cancer and other health effects. So, do we know, we're messing with, you know, this ecology out there. What eats mosquitoes? What survive, what's needed for the mosquitoes, you know, to live so that they can survive? If once we get rid of mosquitoes, what's the next species that's gonna die? You know, when I grew, when I was growing up, I remember seeing the, the little horny toads, you know, the horned lizards and stuff. They're saying that the ants, fire ants kill them off, but whether that be a chemical, why did we were spraying for something else and allowed the fire ants, who are mostly immune to just about anything, come in and kill? When we start messing with the ecology, what are the long-term effects? What are the long-term effects of this duet chemical on humans and our next generation of people? Are we gonna have more birth defects? Are we gonna have shorter lives? I, I don't know. But it's something that seems that if other avenues are better, and this is the least recommended by a lot of people that are, in my opinion, are very educated on the subject and not just reacting to media frenzy on, "There's an illness. What do we do?" Viruses scare me. I don't want, I wash my hands all the time. When I was a paramedic, I, I used to have the driest cracked hands, 'cause I washed every time I looked at somebody. That's what it ended up being like. But we do need to, there are a lot of preventive, preventive things. On our website, there are the four Ds about, you know, draining the standing pools, the buckets of water, changing, if you have animals outside, change their water frequently. All these things can help it down. Now, I do, we did touch on something. I do want to make sure that the citizens know. We have been spraying locally with trucks and stuff in the areas that are not really populated by humans. The wooded areas that may have standing water, but we know that there were a lot of mosquitoes in those areas. And I'm gonna ask that the city manager elaborate on that a little bit more when he, when he gets to speak here, 'cause he'll have a turn, I'm sure, right? Yeah, okay. I, I, I'm just a little leery about doing this aerial spraying, doesn't affect, not to apply it to water. We, history is our greatest teacher. It is. And we know from our country's past and the chemicals that are now appearing in our water supplies that are, you know, people have made the comment, "Wow, you know, look at the kids these days. They're growing up so fast physically, and they look so mature than they did when I was back in school forty years ago," or whatever. Could it be the hormones that we're feeding our beef or cattle and our chickens that are, ended up getting to our children? Those are the facts. I don't think it's a bad thing. You know, we have healthier people now. But there are things that we need to really, really be cautious about and not take a, a big reaction to that. The lady here that received, that had been affected, those are just the people that are reported. What about the rest of us that were sick two weeks ago or three months ago and didn't know that we had West Nile? You know, the headaches. They're saying that the symptoms run from barely a light fever to full-blown sickness. I just think that, as overall, that we need to really step back and try to do a lot of other avenues before we do a mass aerial spraying to affect everybody and spray it on everybody's property and everybody breathing it. So, I'll be voting against the aerial spraying, but I do recommend that we continue the local spraying in the infested areas that we know that we have. And one more thing. If we spray Louisville, who's to say that the mosquitoes from Flower Mount aren't gonna come over here?
Oh, my God.
Oh, my God, yes. All right. I'm done. Thank you.
Captain Durham?
I, I would like to have staff give us an idea of the unpopulated areas that they're spraying in, if that's all they're spraying in.
Well, I think most of our spraying has actually been in populated areas. I'm not sure if that's what you intended to say or not.
Well, I mean, I, I thought it was the wooded areas near those populated. I mean, not like directly on people's yards and stuff.
Now, most of the spraying that we've done has been in neighborhoods, essentially, driving up and down the streets.
Okay. Just like we did when we were kids.
Yeah.
You ride your bicycle in behind it and hide.
Yeah, we used to hide in the clouds ourselves when we were kids.
Mayor, you may continue.
Yes, please.
Just to follow up on what John was saying, that, you know, we do spend on transportation to try to make it safe. We spend billions of dollars a year on highways, on roads, on air quality, all the other stuff that we try to work on, on, on transportation. The horn toads supposedly are, they, they're not here anymore because the red ants aren't any here, aren't here anymore because the fire ants ate the eggs of the red ants or something. That's what got them supposedly. But they, they're not around here anymore. I am in support of the spraying. If we want to discount the elderly who are not in the best health right now, and just go ahead and say, "It's your problem. We're not gonna deal with it," then I guess that's what we need to do. But I'm gonna be in support of the spraying. We've got to do something.
Well, I just wanna make a point on that. I love, I wanna be old one day, so.
Let's let each person has their time, John, without interrupting, please.
Well, just referring to his...
Could you do that, please?
All right.
Thanks.
I'll come back.
Okay. Councilman Vaughn?
Mayor, since this subject came up, I've been looking very closely at the material that's out there. I have had emails and phone calls from citizens both, on both sides of the issue. I, like Councilman Durham, feel like we have to do something, or the only other option that I've, that I've heard is wait, and it's a cycle that, that'll pass. Well, we do have elderly people with medical conditions. All of the professional evidence that I've seen indicates that this is a safe operation. Now, I too have my doubts about the safety of it, and in years to come, they may find out that this was the worst chemical on the planet. But as we sit here today, for me, it seems to be the most effective procedure that we can do. I am concerned about the, the little bugs and the, and the hummingbirds and frogs and those sorts of things. I am. But as the county health department has said, they're spraying it in the least amount of chemical that they can and hoping for it to be effective. And so, for those reasons and others stated, I will be voting in favor of aerial spraying.
Councilman Ferguson?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few things I'd like to say before I come to a conclusion here. West Nile virus is a cumulative term for West Nile neuroinvasive disease, which is encephalitis and meningitis and West Nile fever. Birds are the primary West Nile virus hosts, and they spread among themselves easily. Culex mosquitoes transfer the virus from a host bird to a mammal, but like humans, do not spread it to each other. Male mosquitoes feed primarily on nectar. Only female mosquitoes require a blood meal and therefore can transfer the, the disease from host birds to humans. The average adult Culex carrier mosquito lives about two weeks. At any given time, one-half of the mosquito population will be dead of natural causes within a week. The question is, how many new ones will mature into adult females, and how many of those will become West Nile carriers? Of traps set recently in Dallas, two-thirds had zero infected mosquitoes. Dallas did not release the percentage of infected versus uninfected mosquitoes per trap, but the estimates range from below sixteen percent to less than one percent. From there, the remaining live infected female mosquitoes must go on to bite a human, a tiny fraction of the mosquito population. The human it bites has less than seven-tenths of one percent chance of developing any symptoms, according to the CDC. This year in Louisville, a total of three ten-thousandths of our total population to date has shown any symptoms, and we have no fatalities. When you spray, you must hit a mosquito with a droplet, and some of those mosquitoes will be immune. They must be exposed in an area where you spray. Killing male mosquitoes accomplishes nothing. Only females are carriers. Females are about one-half of the total nighttime active population. Half of those females will be dead in a week if we do nothing. And that's not counting the ones that get eaten by predators. It's a miracle if spraying prevents one West Nile infection, and after spraying, half the mosquitoes are already new replacements within a week, and you're back where you started. After recent ground spraying in Louisville, the trap counts came in significantly higher the next week. This is hardly a strong endorsement for the idea that spraying is particularly ineffective. News agencies always on the lookout for a story that will grab public interest and improve ad sales, have the public in a panic over a disease with a short season. In turn, the public wants a quick and easy fix. Seniors are particularly concerned because of media coverage. Yet, in Louisville, the midpoint age of all reported cases is forty-six years old. The very best protection begins with the individual. Simple measures far exceed any benefit derived from spraying. That will still be true even if we spray. Citizens must eliminate standing water or add inexpensive larvicide to breeding ponds to stop the reproduction cycle. They must wear long sleeves and pants when outdoors. Avoid being outside at dusk and dawn whenever possible, and especially if unprotected, and use some kind of repellent. And if you don't want deet on your skin, there are other options, or you can put it on your clothing. That's what I do. Spraying is a very distant fifth option. Everyone must take responsibility for their own health and not necessarily rely on government to solve it. Clearly, government can't solve everything. Meanwhile, you, as individuals, have all the best tools. And what about next year and the year after that? There's a history of passing the cost for local problems to local governments in an attempt to balance budgets. This is taxpayer money, whether it comes from, from the federal, state, county, or local level. At a time when Denton County is looking to raise its property tax to cover increasing expenses, I can't help but think we can expect the same again if the state transfers this expense in future years to the counties where they are affected. There are plenty of Texas counties, some seventy-five percent of the state, helping to pay for our spraying, that have zero West Nile cases as of last week. By the way, the current Texas Department of State Health Services report says there have been thirty fatalities in, in Texas. So, if you want to know where to look that up, I can tell you. Having said that, you now know I have little faith in this solution. However, when I took this job, I knew I would personally, that I pers, that what I personally thought was not what I was, would always get to do. I have an obligation to listen to citizens. I know that I will make many decisions that satisfy half the public and leave the other half unhappy. That's the nature of public administration. The majority of our seniors, the segment which feels most at risk for West Nile, have clearly expressed their support for spraying over the past week. I have heard you. The Denton County Health Department Director also endorses this position. If I vote against this because of what I think, that it's a waste of time and money and far too little too late, it will fall to the mayor to break the tie, and I believe it'll pass. While I think it's full of false promise to calm a concerned and frustrated public, I will let the buck stop here tonight rather than pass it to my left. I will approve the direction to staff to consider aerial spraying if the county offers the option. But I want to make it clear that the best solution to this problem by far lies in the hands of each citizen and not in some low efficacy, government-created chemical cloud. Thank you.
Do you entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Councilman Durham?
Second.
Second by Councilman Vaughn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Motion passes three to one. Next item on the agenda is, in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.071, City of Carroll, of Greenville versus Syngenta Corporation, Inc., and Syngenta AG, Case Number 3.10CV-00188, JPG, PMF, United States District Court, or the Southern District of Illinois. Section 551.071, Consideration With Attorney Legal Issues Related to MCL Architectural Services, and Section 551.072, Property Acquisition, and Section 551.087, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations. We're now convening in the closed session.
The chief abandoned us?
I know. What's up with that?
Boy, his, his, as usual, people stay here, you know?
I know.
What are you kidding me, man?
The chief abandoned us.
What?
I don't, I didn't see any red lights on during the meeting, the guys. They weren't, they didn't have anything on. Had them on for a minute, and then they turned them off.
Yeah.
Thought it was funny.
Okay, we'll convene back in the regular session. Is there any items to discuss, Council? Is there any items to discuss, counsel? Hello, counsel, are there any items to be discussed?
Yes, Mayor, there is. I move to submit a claim form and to join in the settlement of the claims brought against Syngenta in a lawsuit, Case Number 3.10, versus CV-00188, JPG PMF, pending in the United States District Court for the Southern District of Illinois, and to authorize the city manager or his designee, and the city attorney or her designee, to execute any necessary documents.
Have a motion by Councilman Vaughn?
Second.
Second by Councilman Durham. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Any other items?
Yes, Mayor. I move to accept the mediator's proposal in the pre-litigation dispute between the city and Sutherland Page LLP, and authorize the city manager or his designee, and the city attorney or her designee, to sign any necessary documents.
Have a motion by Councilman Ferguson?
Second.
Second by Councilman Vaughn. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. entertain a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilman Ferguson?
Second.
Second by Councilman Durham. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.